I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the city council meeting Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. With that, if we could have roll call, please.
Luther.
Here.
Crowe. Sutherland.
Eric, can you unmute and say that you're here?
Yeah.
One more time, please.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yanko. McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman. Summerfield.
Here.
Okay, well, thank you for everybody for attending tonight's city council meeting. We have a number of people that are out tonight, illness and otherwise. So that being said, we did approve them to be up here by Zoom. And so they are here. We do have a quorum via Zoom and in presence this evening. So thank you for that. No special recognitions this evening. Approval of minutes would be in line. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, go ahead, Cody.
I'll move to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Go ahead, Chad.
I'd like to second Cody's motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving into public comments. Public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody could speak at the podium for three minutes or less about agenda items for the evening only. But if you would like to come up and speak about agenda items this evening, please give us your name and your address, and you'll have to press the button down on your microphone so it can pick up the recording. With that being said, we'll open up public comments, and you're welcome to come to the podium and speak this evening. Public comments is now open.
Ronald Larson, twenty-seven oh seven Cherry Blossom Lane. I was here a couple of months ago talking about UTVs. I just want to thank the mayor and David and all you council members, the time you're spending on this. Like I said a couple of months ago, I'm a retired businessman, thirty-five years here and in Monomni, and now I'm trying to enjoy life. And I got a UTV. And I'm really having fun. The problem is I live a mile from the trail. And now if this gets passed, it saves me getting a trailer and loading that thing and heading out into the country. So I've talked to a lot of people, and I'll tell you, a lot of people are happy. The city folks can come in, do business, and leave, and we in the city can get out without trailering. And really appreciate what you guys have done, and I hope this goes through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Public comment is open. If anybody would like to come up to the podium and speak, you can do so at this time.
Evening. Eric Schultz again with the ATV Association. I'm a lot of Downing. Appreciate the time. Appreciate the time that you guys are spending on it. Been working with Dave off and on with some other of the fine details. I think we've got a lot of that worked out. Looking forward to moving forward with this.
Eric, can we get your address too, please?
Downey.
Just Downing?
Complete. You want a complete address?
Yes, sir.
Okay. N nine zero seven four Ninetieth Street.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, public comments is open. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll move on with the rest of our meeting. Under unfinished business. For a proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven and ordinance repealing and recreating Title VI, Chapter One, Section twelve, all terrain and utility train vehicle usage. There has been a lot of work done on this. There's been roadmaps that have been issued and sent off to the DOT. It's been approved by DOT. We have had several meetings on this. We did the first reading. That was approved. Tonight, we're looking at a second reading. I believe I'm going to have Eric bring us up a little bit to speed, and then we'll hand it over to Dave. Eric?
Sure. Well said, Mayor. So before you today is the is bringing back for a possible waiver of a second reading related to the UTV, ATV, UTV ordinance. In this ordinance, everything is the same as has come back to you before. We do ask for one change, and David will explain it further, is that in the ordinance, we have listed that it would go into effect on September first. If we're able to make the second waiver of the reading tonight and then pass it on the August fifth meeting, being able to get the signs in place by September first for usage of the ordinance would be difficult at best. So we do recommend that the council direct staff to change the ordinance to go into effect on October first twenty twenty-four, because then that would give us some time to be able to correct and erect or create and erect the signs. And then, David, do you mind filling in council with the remainder of the information?
Yeah, so Eric mentioned the signs. So there's one hundred and fifty-seven approximate signs that need to be installed. Essentially, most of them are trail ends as you approach, say, Stout Road or Broadway where you cannot you cannot travel along Broadway or Stout Road. You can only cross it. And so, for instance, where you come up on Cherry Street to Broadway, we want to have a a trail end sign there so that folks don't get come up Cherry and then want to turn right and travel along Broadway. So we expect that once passage occurs on if this body approves the second waiver tonight and then a passage on August fir- or August fifth, we do expect about a four-week delivery for signs, and then we need to have time to actually install those signs. So it would be difficult for us to get them in there. The the date that we had in there was on the original draft that I think we put in in June, and then we kind of we pushed it back one meeting, if I recall correctly, on on the first reading. So we are it's up to this body, of course, but this the appropriate motion would be to waive the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven to repeal and reconstruct recreate Title VI, Chapter One, Section twelve, all terrain and utility train vehicle usage with a change to being effective October one of twenty twenty-four.
I would probably recommend just changing that portion during the adoption on it. We can just take care of changing the date then, but that is what the city would or the staff would recommend. And yep, there definitely can be other changes too, based on what the council says and what, based on public comment as well. And David, if you would, just for if we have new people here, new people listening, if you can just do a couple of the bullet points on what we put in the ordinance.
Yeah, so the kind of the two biggest pieces are the all city streets will be considered to be designated routes except for a list which includes Highway ninety-four, US Highway twelve from Oak to the city limits, Pine Avenue from Broadway to Heller Road, Broadway from Tanner Street north to the city limits, Broadway from First Avenue West south to the city limits. So the only chunk of Broadway that would be allowed would be from First Avenue West, which is by the Wilson Place Museum up to Tanner Street, which is up just past the old Board of Education building. On twenty-nine, going west of town, there would be a chunk from River Drive over to Hofflin Street. But otherwise, the other two sections of Highway twenty-nine to the west would be excluded. And then Highway twelve essentially from the Broadway all the way out, Crescent, Main, Crescent, Fourth, Stout would all be exempt. So our major traffic roads are exempt from this except for that the two chunks where we have to get over bridges on either the Red Cedar or Lake Minnoman. We do have in there a number of improvements on the existing ordinance. We require that the operation hours of operation is between seven AM and nine PM. The ATVs, UTVs will have to have headlamps, tail lamps, brake lamps on turn signals. And then anyone under eighteen years of age must be wearing a helmet. And then folks must have a valid operator's license. Those are those several things are all improvements over what's in the existing ordinance as it sits right now.
And we do require insurance as well.
And we require insurance, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's a good summary. At this point, then, if we want to make a motion to waive the second reading, we can do so at this time. Jeff Luther.
I make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven to repeal and recreate Title VI, Chapter One, Section twelve, all terrain and utility train vehicle usage.
Ben, is that a good motion?
Yep.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second to this? Lee?
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to waive the second reading. Any discussion? Oh, go ahead, Lee.
Yeah, I was surprised. I've only had three people express concern about it, which kind of surprises me. But I've been on council long enough that I've had some dealing with controversy when Culvers was kind of moving on the east side. People came forth from that area, and you know, the world was going to come to an end. Well, it hasn't. Stepping stone was the same thing. The people that behind it said that, you know, our property values are going to be down. There are going to be crime. It's going to go up. Hasn't happened. And I kind of, you know, I requested that we get a count of the number of these vehicles registered in Monomni proper, and government red tape eliminated that process. And so I did just a little bit of calculation on this just to satisfy myself. And last meeting, Mr. Schultz said that there's probably eight thousand in the county, and he thought that maybe four thousand were in the city. Well, if you look at our population in twenty twenty-two was this shy of seventeen thousand people. And the state says the average residence in 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 Wisconsin has two point four people in the residence. So if you do the math on that, we come up with this under seven thousand residents. And if you look at four thousand and divide by sixty-nine forty, you come up with point five seven. Round it up to point six means that if that is a right number, and I think he's quite high on that, six and ten of the residents would have one of these touring vehicles. And I don't I don't think there's that many in town. So I feel that even diminishes the impact as far as from the residents living in town and and using it. So to me, it even gets to be a less of a impact or a negative thing than what might be supposed.
Well, and thank you, Lee. I think that's that. I think you're quite accurate on that. I don't think it's going to be as big an impact as you think. I thought it'd be a great idea that I told my wife I was going to get one, and she wouldn't let me. So I guess we don't have to worry about that. So I don't know how many of you already have one, but if you want to ask your wife to get one, you may not get one anyway. So buy one for your wife. That's the way I'm going to get around it. So we have a motion and a second on the Florida wave the second here, second reading. Any additional discussion? All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're going to keep this business. We're going to keep business rolling tonight. This meeting is is we're going to go on to number four B. Proposed selection of engineering firm for well number nine and water treatment plant number nine. Project discussion, possible action. We had this on our good night, gentlemen and ladies. You bet. We had this on the last meeting's agenda, and Eric was out with illness and and I wanted to properly review in depth the decision of making of how we wanted to handle this. But in review of the the materials that I had in front of me and the direction we were heading, I think it's proper that the city Monomni does choose MSA professionals for the design. Now, this does not include the drilling of the well or anything of that nature. But the experience that they've had and the amount of of well of wells that they've tackled, I think their performance speaks for itself. So with that, I'm going to hand this off to Eric and Chief, if you want to take it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Well said. And frankly, I apologize to the council here. That was a big reason why the decision got delayed and held off so we could ask some internal discussions about the request for proposals and then the decisions to move forward and then meeting with staff and and with the mayor to discuss the decision. I sat in on the evaluations of the proposals and had a great opportunity to listen to our people that are in our water utility and wastewater to get their feedback on the process and reviewing the plans, along, of course, with with David Schofield. And then based upon the information that was presented forth in those proposals, MSA was the clear the clear favorite out of that grouping amongst all the the poll, all the people that did the evaluation. And I feel that they will do a fine job and then represent and help create a well system for our most precious resource, our our water. To go into the technical details of it, I am going to turn over to Mr. David Schofield.
David?
Thank you. So I know we've we've talked about the well off and on here for a little over a year. You know, this is going to be one of the bigger investments that we've made in our water system in a long time. The estimated cost of the well and water treatment plan is approximately eleven million dollars over the next forty years. If we use today's operational costs, there's going to be another six million dollars in operational costs. So we have somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventeen million dollars of an investment that that we're looking to choose who's going to design that for us. So we did send out a request for proposals to six different firms. Four of those firms, well, five of the firms replied, two of them partnered together. And then we went through the proposals that were received and and and, you know, obviously, these are all the folks that we are talking about here are are good quality firms. I don't want there to be any confusion here. This is not bad versus good. This is, you know, we're trying to do our best to to pick the best firm that's going to lead us to success on this project. So, you know, in so we compared each of the firms on various different categories. We had points for proximity to the project because there's obviously a benefit to having a engineer that's that's close. They can get to the project site if there's issues quickly. We gave points for fee. This is we're looking out about three and a half year process. And so making an estimate on what those fees are going to cost, we want to make sure that that we have an understanding of what the fees are for each of the firms. We don't want to, you know, pick the the best firm, and all of a sudden, their fees are twelve million dollars, and they're significantly more than anybody else. And then we had points for schedule and then and experience and expertise. And so the experience and expertise we met as a group, there were seven of us went through the proposals. I called all twenty of the references that were listed on on all the proposals. And and to be honest with you, the a lot of the firms did did very, very well. The one that stood out to me was the city of Altoona. MSA is doing a well there, and I think maybe a second well is coming up in the near future. And they spoke very highly of Brad and his team. Brad is here today. They, one of the questions that I asked was, are they are they willing to tell you when when you're wrong? Or at least willing to give you a give you an opinion that they know you might not like. And and they gave the example in Altoona where they Altoona felt that they needed a well and a water tower. And through discussions through the process, they were it was clear to them they they really didn't need a water tower. And so obviously, that's a big investment. They thought they needed it. They were willing to proceed with the water tower, and they realized that through the through the process and looking at the at the at the engineering numbers that they did not need to spend the money for for a water tower. So those are that was some of the examples that we had for that experience and expertise. So the four firms we went through and totaled up all the scores. MSA Professional Services scored a seventy-three out of a hundred. Short Elliott Hendrickson was at sixty-two or sixty-three. Cedar Corporation was at fifty-six, and CBS Square was at fifty-five. So based on those scores, we're recommending to go with MSA Professional Services. I do want to just say, you know, Cedar Corporation has been an excellent partner for the city for five decades, and that will absolutely continue. We have seventy-three open projects with them, and I think over the last twelve months, we've they billed us seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. This is not an indictment against Cedar Corporation. They do excellent work. This is a major investment in a very technical project, and we just felt like we need to make sure that we have the right partner. So we are recommending MSA Professional Services.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schofield, and thank you, Eric Atkinson. And I had a chance to review in depth to the proposals by these firms, and I would concur. I think that they specialize in this. They don't do, I mean, this is what they're good at, and so we want the best we can get. That being said, I would also support the contract going to MSA Professionals for this project. So with that, I'll hand it out to council. If you'd like to make a motion or have a conversation. The representatives are here this evening from MSA also. We could waive the rules if you wanted to ask any questions. Otherwise, if you concur with staff, you could go ahead and make a motion to support this as well. Yes, Cody.
I'll move to accept the proposal from MSA Professional Services of Barboo, Wisconsin, for engineering services for well nine and water treatment plant nine at a total cost not to exceed one million, three hundred twenty thousand dollars.
That's a good motion, Ben. Thank you. And council? Doesn't matter. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll second Cody's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Is there any additional discussion on this? Okay, we're going to need a roll call vote on this.
Luther.
Yeah.
Sutherland.
Eric, are you out there? Come back to him.
Can you can you unmute him by remote? Just in case he's having a challenge with that?
Yeah.
I'm unmuted now.
Okay, are you in favor of said motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Summerfield.
Yes.
Okay, then motion passes. I just have to say this, Cody, that's probably one of the biggest motions you've made this year. All right. All right, back to work here. Under and congratulations, MSA. Under five A, proposed rejection of all bids for Bongi Drive resurfacing project. And there's a a good reason for this. And
I can start you off if you want. So so the bids came in. We're a little disappointed on the high price. David will will provide an explanation for us. So we're hoping that you will support the rejection of the bids. David, can you walk them through the steps of of the process that we went through?
Yeah, so this project is Bongi Drive from twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth. This is essentially River Heights School to the old VFW. To be honest with you, I got a little optimistic on what this project would cost. We were looking at doing a four-inch, removing all the existing pavement, putting on new four inches of asphalt. And the bids came in quite a bit higher than we anticipated, or at least that I anticipated. The what we have in the budget between what we bonded for and what we have remaining on L-RIP grants is a little over seventy-five thousand dollars. And so we're quite a bit over. So we are recommending rejecting all the bids for the project that will allow the contractors to get their bid bid bonds back. And then we'll be readvertising for a one and a half inch millon overlay project that we hope will bring the cost a lot more reasonable.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schofield. So if my understanding is right, we went with a three-inch layer, and now we're going to mill off an inch and a half, put an inch and a half fresh, new black top down. Should be a cost savings there.
Should be a cost savings, yes.
And I guess depending on if the base is good or not. But we'll bring that back for council to consideration.
We'll bring that back for at a future meeting. So tonight, the only action you need to or we're recommending you make is to reject all bids.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion to support rejecting all bids? Chad?
I would like to make
Talk into your microphone, though.
I would like to make a motion to reject all bids for the Bongi Drive resurfacing project.
Okay. Randy?
I'll second Chad's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to reject all the bids for the Bongi project. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And that moves us down to five B. Possible traffic pattern changes on Main Street East between Third Street East and Fourth Street East. This is kind of interesting discussion, and that's what it is tonight, is discussion, because we want to get a feel from not only the council, but we would like to take this also to the to the public to find out what their feelings are, the downtown merchants, et cetera, and so forth. So so basically, we're just putting this out here for a discussion piece, and you can also kind of think about this and give us your wishes. So, Mr. Schofield?
Yes, so right now, State Highway twenty-nine is located on Main Street from Broadway all the way over to about Seventh Street East. The section between Broadway and Fourth Street East is what I would consider to be kind of the the main downtown. That's our that's our main drag. Obviously, Broadway's also included there, but Main Street from Broadway to Fourth is is kind of our our main drag. Right now, with State Highway twenty-nine on there, we have some we have limited options on what we can do there. It's a it's a state highway, so trucks can be on a state highway. The we have to, if we want to close that section of the street, we have to get approval from the DOT, and we have to do a detour. We have to do a signed detour to get traffic off of that area. So the state has, in working with state on some improvements downtown, we've explored the opportunity to do what's called the jurisdictional rescission or jurisdictional transfer where we would actually move State Highway twenty-nine from Main Street up to Sixth Avenue. So State Highway twenty-nine would stay on Broadway from Main Street up to Sixth Avenue. It would go east on Sixth Avenue over to Crescent, and then it would slide down along Crescent back to that same intersection. So we wouldn't be getting rid of State Highway twenty-nine. We would just be relocating it. After relocating it, then it gives us some options on what we want to do on Main Street. We can look at at doing designated truck route on State Highway twenty-nine and then doing enforcement, more of a, you know, the have folks pulling over large trucks that that use the Main Street in that section. That's kind of the case zero as as you see on your screen here. The second one, which Megan will pull up here is what I'm calling case one, which is a one block, one-way from Third Street East to Fourth Street East. Again, this is not something that we could even contemplate when State Highway twenty-nine was on there. But this would we would have the opportunity to do this after the jurisdictional rescission was approved. So in this, in in case one, the Main Street from Broadway to to Third Street East would remain two-way traffic, parking on either side, on both sides. You know, essentially, exactly the same as it is right now. From Third Street to Fourth Street, it would be a one-way eastbound only. So you could drive from Thread Lab to the candy store, but not not vice versa. You could only go eastbound. Traffic that's coming westbound would be diverted, and it's a little hard to see on the sketch. But the the Pork Chop Island that that sits out there at at Fourth Crescent and Main would be expanded and would kick all traffic, all westbound traffic onto Crescent. So that, you know, by definition, you're going to reduce the amount of traffic in in that block by half because you're getting rid of all the the westbound traffic. So that that's case one. Then case two is and I'll just say it's a fairly radical proposal, which is to entirely close Main Street from Third Street East to Fourth Street East. That would allow that block to become kind of a pedestrian mall. I I'm a University of Iowa grad, and the pedestrian mall in downtown Iowa City is is a highly utilized civic location. I'm trying to think of examples here in in the area, but I'm blanking at the moment. But it would allow you to to do some things that you couldn't do right now. You could have some seating areas out there. You could put in quite a few trees. You could have a giant checkerboard, you know, that kind of thing that you could imagine would be people would be using that area. And then, you know, obviously, we want them to then walk into the stores and restaurants and and use that. So this obviously case two is a fairly major change. I think it's worth, if we're going to take a swing like this, we should at least explore taking a big swing. I think it's worth, if we're going to take a swing like this, we should at least explore taking a big swing. Um and uh so I think it's worth at least a, at least some contemplation. I'm sure there are folks on. Uh that might have some concerns about that, particularly some of the uh business owners down there that that maybe rely on um on vehicles uh for that. So. We did hire uh AECOM to do a traffic study, and the results are in the packet. Obviously, uh in both of these cases, it, go to the next sheet there. Um in both of these cases, uh traffic on uh Sixth Avenue increases. Kind of, obviously, it's not going to stay on. Uh stay on Main, you're going to uh force it up that way. Um so there's, there's an increased amount of traffic on Sixth Avenue. There's also an increased amount of crashes on Sixth Avenue. It's a little hard to see, but I want to say there's uh like a hundred and seventy-one percent increase. Um eighty percent increase. So there's some, there's some kind of fairly major changes in the number of tra- uh crashes that are expected. I will say on Sixth Avenue, the existing traffic uh crashes are very light. So a hundred and thirty percent increase is. Is rela-, you know, you're still, it's still a relatively small number. Um but you know, obviously, in in case one, you would be increasing the amount of traffic on two uh on the sixth, if you go to the next one. So this is for now case uh two. So this is the full closure of that block, that last block of Main Street. Uh in this case, uh it's very similar. Um you'll see two things on this screen. I think I I kind of glossed over in the last one, but we'll stay with this one. Uh you'll see a a dark red line along Broadway uh going from Sixth Avenue uh south towards Acoustic Cafe. So uh right now, if folks are turning right onto Main Street. Um you know, there's, there's a right turn lane there essentially that goes all the way to Tenth Avenue. Um in this case, because you're going to be going north of Main Street, you could occasionally have traffic backing up across Main Street. Uh waiting for the light at Sixth Avenue. So that's what that that red um line is showing, is that there is a potential backup there of traffic. Um also on this one, um there is, uh there would be a need for signalization of the intersection of Sixth Avenue and Crescent. So there would need to be a traffic signal, um or I won't use the R word, um but uh maybe roundabout in that location. So some, some type of a a traffic uh control structure. Um so I wanted to bring this to this body's attention. I know we talked a little bit about it when we hired AECOM to do the traffic study. I'm going to be going to the uh downtown Menominee meeting on Monday or on Wednesday morning. Um I'm not asking for any action tonight. I just wanted to bring this to this body's attention. We'll go to downtown Menominee, have a discussion with them, and then we'll bring this back at a later meeting for um for, for additional consideration. But I just wanted to make you folks aware that this was a discussion that would be coming your way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schofield. I know that there's a lot of information here. Um the other thing is, whatever move um is made. This will be a a big conversation with a lot of people from Menominee. We were, we will have a lot of meetings. This is how many years out? Microphone?
The state is looking at doing their project in twenty twenty-nine, so this would probably be a twenty thirty project.
Right.
Which for the state is quick. For us, not so much.
Well, I don't know. The way we've been going lately, this is pretty fast. No, I'm teasing. Um. No, I I think it's, it bears consideration. I, you know, major changes like that are tough for me. Uh one of my biggest concerns would be the traffic pattern and, you know, possible backups like uh the red line illustrated up there on on Broadway. So. You know, there's a lot to be talked about, a lot to be discussed, but we want to queue in all of Menominee for this um, for this discussion. So that being said, thank you, Mr. Schofield. Anybody else have anything to add to that? We can keep moving. Go ahead, Chad.
I'm just wondering how Denny feels about closing that road completely uh.
On.
That bad time can't ask right, right now?
No, fire chief? Oh, you can. Come on up. Um yeah, Denny Kras, our fire chief. Push your microphone on. What do you, what are your thoughts? Can we still get out of the south fire station?
Yeah, Dave and I talked today. Um as long as eastbound uh remains open, we would be in favor of that. Um completely closing it would obviously have a great impact on us, but so.
I suppose putting a donut shop really doesn't apply to you either, does it?
I think firefighters like donuts too.
Absolutely.
All the other chiefs, okay.
I was more thinking like, how is he going to fire to fire at Fleet Feet or?
Sure.
Something right in the middle there.
Oh, I see. If it was closed off.
Yeah, it was completely closed off.
Uh huh. It would have to be some sort of access points.
Yeah, we'd, we'd still be able to have drivable surface that we'd be able to get through there.
Stout does there?
Correct, and that's what I'm assuming, so.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. Good question. Thank you, Denny. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Lee?
Just another example for those of us that went to UW Mass instead of Iowa. State Street from the Capitol down to the campuses is non-vehicle other than public transportation. And it's been that way for years. When I went there, it wasn't like that, but uh, but it works.
And the one nice thing about that, that I experienced, when you come out of an establishment, you don't have to worry about getting run over. I mean, having a hamburger or something in your hands, you know, not paying attention. But um. There's a lot, a lot to be talked about, and we've got some time for this. So that being said, let's move on with the rest of our meeting. Uh budget transfers. Um Chief Hollister, would you come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about this transfer, please?
Police Department's requesting a budget transfer for uh second computer station. Uh we purchased one for the records department uh this spring. And due to the high volume of videos that we process now with technology moving forward, uh we've got two people in that collateral assignment that are processing videos and uh. It's, it's a timely process. And with that being said, uh we have the new computer now, and we have the old computer. And the new computer was able to process seventeen videos to one video of the old uh computer. So. You can see the downtime that we have and and with the workload that we have, it's easier to have a higher efficiency if we can have two of those computers. And uh with that, also with, you've got the district attorney's office needing uh videos, you've got the public request for videos, you've got redacting measures. You can go on and on, but as the videos have entered our world now, we're going to see more of this. So this may be a great uh, I guess, personnel uh for staffing uh support system.
Is this also an internal transfer?
Yes.
Okay.
It it would be for twenty-five hundred dollars and be from the radio maintenance contract to the office supplies.
Great. Okay, uh if anybody would like to support this with a motion, I think we can do so. Oh, Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, I make a motion approving the police department's budget transfer as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Randy, go ahead.
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman? I'm sorry, Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Okay, moving on to um mayor's report. Well, the only thing I have to report on is uh the music over Menominee the other night was amazing. So if you haven't been there on Thursday night, go check out the library. It was absolutely dynamic. Uh Lettington Guard Band, of course, the pies were amazing. The music was amazing. The. The city really does a great job with the uh Lettington Guard Band in Wilson Park here on Tuesday evenings. Uh don't forget that there's um uh the Let's Paint the Town uh celebration this weekend. It paints town. Uh there's going to be a lot going on. Uh Moose Lodge is offering bingo in the morning, and then it's followed by poker bands, followed by um, there will be a beer tent there, a car show, things for kids to do. Uh face painting and all that kind of thing. Um just a lot of things happening. Over two hundred vendors they've got coming in this year, along with food trucks. So. So come on down on Saturday. Uh Wilson Avenue here will be uh full of vendors and a lot happening. Um that being said, um I would say communications. So Eric?
Yeah, so just a couple of quick things. So we're starting to work on operational budget while the department heads are turning in their. Capital improvement requests, and so we'll be working through that process. Another thing is, it kind of relates to our downtown. Our parking utility right now is taking a look at. Some different permitting options to try to expand overnight and day permit parking spots. So we may have some potential ordinance changes coming down the road. Uh within the next handful of months. But that's all I have to report. Everything's good.
Hey, thank you, Eric. And David, staff, Caitlin, Kate, Ben, council? No? All right. Well, then we're going to keep this uh meeting moving. Um claims, we have a revised claims list in front of us this evening. So if anyone would like to make a motion to support the revised claims list, we can do so at this time. Cody, go ahead.
I'll move to approve the revised claims list as presented.
Thank you. Randy?
Oh, seconded. Well, it looks like you're moving to seconded. Okay, so motion made by Cody, seconded by Randy. Any discussion?
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us down to licenses. The normal license list is, uh we have a revised, that's correct. We have a revised license this evening. Uh so if you'd like to support the revised license list, look, Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the revised normal license list as presented.
Hey, thank you. Is there a second to Jeff's motion?
There is one renewal on there, correct? And that does include one renewal as well, just to make sure you're aware of that.
Mr. Mayor, I will second Jeff's motion.
Okay, thank you, Mary. We're having a sidebar discussion here.
Just want to uh point out for the council, it does include one uh license renewal from the previous year. Uh so it is a new renewal coming in for the Menominee Lodge fifteen eighty-four.
Okay, is that okay with you, Jeff?
That, great, great.
And Mary, you're okay with that as well?
Sure am.
Okay, that's great. Okay, that being said, then, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, thank you. Uh opposed? All right, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn this evening? Cody, you got your hand up.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Randy?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody. It was an interesting meeting. We.